Councilwoman William X. Conlon, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Liz Johnston, Third District, present.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano, Fourth District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilman Pete Masaro, Sixth District, present.
Councilwoman Trenae McGee, Seventh District, present.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli, Eighth District, present.
Councilman Robert Brunel, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen, Tenth District, present.
And Councilman Ron Cugliani, Council at Large. Okay, we have a full house tonight, thank you. Before we start the public hearings, we would just, if I could, ask everyone for a moment of silence. This past week, we lost retired Fire Chief James T. Burns Jr. from the West Shore Fire Department. Chief Burns was appointed a Grade C firefighter for the West Shore Fire Department in 1971. He was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant in 1978, and appointed Chief of the Department in 1980, for which he served until his retirement until 1996. Upon his faithful dedication of fire service to the city of West Haven for 26 years, he joined Bayer Pharmaceuticals Corp. and directed many programs, specifically their Health, Environment, and Safety Department. Chief Burns has also served as executive assistant to the mayor, under Mayor Picard's administration. If we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, we have three public hearings this evening. The first one, 6:15 PM, is the Public Lands Committee. That public hearing is on the Savin Rock Conference Center property proposal. Immediately after that public hearing, we will have the Redevelopment Committee, a public hearing on draft commercial economic incentive program. And immediately after that public hearing, we will have another Public Lands Committee hearing, the sale of Stiles School for a mixed-use hydroponic proposal. At this point, I could turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Public Lands Committee, Councilman Donovan. I just will also remind the audience that the first hearing is just on the Savin Rock Conference Center proposal, so if you, you'll have other opportunities to speak about other issues as the meeting goes on, but this is specific to that proposal. So, Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Chairman. Present tonight in the committee, we have Councilman Mitch Gallagnano, Councilwoman Crystal Finelli, Councilman William X. Conlon, Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, and myself, Dr. Dennis Chair. The public hearing is now open. If anyone would, from the public, would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address.
Good evening, Paul Frazalone, 19 Bloom Street. I got a couple of concerns in the proposal for the conference center. One, I think there should be an investigation why the other gentleman's proposal for the motel was never processed through. It was kind of shocking last month when we had the city council meeting, beginning this month, when a gentleman got up and said he submitted all his paperwork on time to the planning and zoning, and, or whoever had to go to PDF. And then, they, when he called up, wanted to know who got the bid, and they said, "We never received yours," and he had everything timestamped in. So I think there should be an investigation on why that gentleman's proposal was not even opened, at all. I mean, this town always leaves the door open for lawsuits. Every time you close the door, another door opens up for a lawsuit. I mean, we're saying we have an agreement with the brewery, but how can we have an agreement with the brewery when the city council, two weeks ago, said they didn't really know nothing what was going on? But we had a, we had a photo op before the election, that we're having a brewery come in. That's not even, the concrete is not even poured out of the bag yet. So, I mean, we're always, West Haven's always doing this. Was it a photo op for the election? It was just like, two years ago, before the election, we sold Stiles School and Thompson School. And look on tonight's agenda, Stiles School, Thompson School. We still own it. What are we doing? Four years ago, two years before that, Captain's Galley's got knocked down, we got redevelopment going on, nothing's going on, nothing. But I definitely want to see an investigation of why this gentleman's proposal for a possible convention center motel was not, not opened, and not processed through the proper channels, as it was timestamped in. Also, in regards of the possible potential of a brewery, I know a lot of people like that as the use for that property. I really personally don't think a brewery is West Haven's savior. I'm more towards the convention center, possible convention center, but I listened to some of the articles in the paper, and it seems like, well, you know, what if the motel goes out of business? What if, you know, but nobody cares about, what if, what if the brewery goes out of business? I mean, I understand they've been around for 20 years, breweries are slowly getting bought up by bigger breweries. You can't, in the back of your mind, you can't say, "Well, 10 years, you might not be motel no more." You can't say that. When Phyllis has moved over there, everyone thought Phyllis is gonna be there for another 40 years. They got out, Harbor Miss went in, then Casino went in, and then we took it over. You can't use that as, you can't, you can't say, "Well, you know, you might not be here in 10 years." You're not giving that guy the due diligence of the possibility of building a motel. On the water, I doubt if that thing will ever go under. It's not like the Debonair, the Debonair, they never put no money back into it. But we definitely, like I said, two weeks ago at the meeting, we definitely need to have something down the shore, tastefully, that could draw some people off the highway to spend money in, in West Haven. Now, if you look, the guy's presentation was pretty, pretty good last month, like, two weeks ago. And he had some good plans, or whatever. He said that historically, these types of breweries, restaurants in the near, within the vicinity of them are closing. And it's true, if you do your research, two restaurants in Woodbridge, they closed in the last couple of years, due to, these breweries all have vending trucks and all that stuff. They're creating their own atmosphere on their own property. Now, if you guys remember, when Jimmy's was going for their patio, I was at every one of those meetings. You need, for every parking sp, for every seat, you need three, no, for every three seats, you need one parking space. This guy, this proposal, doesn't even have close enough parking. Now, the rumor is that, well, they're gonna get an agreement with the city to do shuttles from the high school. Now, you open another can of worms, because that's owned by the Board of Ed. What if there's an event going on at the high school on a Friday night, and there's a big event going on at this brewery? I mean, what are you gonna do? And we can't, you can't start giving people permits to use city parking lot somewhere else. If they can't contain the amount of people that are gonna be in their building, on their own property, shame on them. We could dictate, Planning and Zoning could dictate any regulation you guys want, to minimize the impact on the shore and on the passageway. Now, one of the proposals, well, somebody was saying is, they're gonna bump out the sidewalk, instead of walking, going straight from Bradley Point, right past the conference center, right past Jimmy's, it's gonna bump out near the water, and it's gonna give them a little more buffering grass area. Now, if anybody knows, if you're going through Planning and Zoning, and you're going through a liquor commission, you need to have a wall, okay, a barrier, I believe it's four feet, three or four feet, because you're not supposed to be allowed liquor to get, be handed over. And with the conference center, I personally, I'll tell you, I was at functions for Rotary, took my glass of wine, went right across, and looked over the railing. That was so illegal, the way we did it, but we got away with it. But there's gonna be so many stipulations, that with the liquor commission, in regards of the public access, Jimmy's had to put three fire, fire escapes in, just for their patios, which, which was totally ridiculous. So we gotta look at the whole picture. You can't be prejudging this while a brewery's the best fit for West Haven, convention center might be a better fit, there might be something else that's better. But I think we did this process wrong, once again, I think we pushed it through for an election. Now, I really personally think this meeting shouldn't be going on tonight, because we have five new council people getting sworn in in less than two weeks. So, why wouldn't you allow them to be sitting in these chairs before you have this public hearing? That makes another reason why a lot of us think that this is trying to get pushed through with this current council. You got five, five new council people getting sworn in, I think December 5th. They should have the right to-
Four.
Four?
Four.
Four? Okay, four, doesn't make any difference if it was one. They still have the right to be at this meeting, sitting there, not here, they might be here, but they should be sworn in as residents of West Haven, council people of West Haven, listen to this whole theory, because they're gonna ones, be the ones voting on it. My personal opinion, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Howery, I'm at 98 Kelsey, and because of my address, I feel like I live in the neighborhood that probably has the most to gain, or lose, by this proposal. My husband and I have three young kids, and let me tell you, that we were thrilled to hear about the possibility of a brewery at the Savin Rock Center, specifically Nebco. Everyone who says that a brewery is gonna be bad for West Haven, or is not gonna be the thing that is gonna revive West Haven, has clearly never been to any of Connecticut's bustling craft brew, craft breweries, including Nebco. I advise anybody in here who is wondering what the atmosphere is like, or has concerns about, oh, it's gonna be drunken debauchery, it's gonna be too mu, no, go drive by Two Roads, go drive by Nebco. My husband and I, with our three children, have gone specifically to random towns all over Connecticut, just because they happen to have a craft brew. We love going to various craft breweries, going to the local restaurants that are nearby, ordering from the food trucks that often the breweries partner with, local food vendors, to, to have, you know, in the parking lot, and whatnot. And it is exactly the kind of thing that our beautiful city, with its three miles of public shoreline, needs to attract folks down to the beach. The possibility of a hotel, frankly, scares me. It scares me quite a bit, especially because the, the proposal that includes the hotel would require the city to sell that parcel of land. And that is terrifying, because I see what has happened to local hotels, up by the highway, the Debonair Hotel was already mentioned, and I see that they're, you know, we're not a tourist destination just yet, and until we have attractions year-round that will bring folks, I really, really worry about selling that beautiful piece of property, which has so much West Haven history, to a company that may succeed, but also may flop, and then we're lost, we no longer have the land. This is huge for West Haven, and huge for the long-term growth of our city. I, I, again, you know, I joke about, my husband and I have literally go places in Connecticut, just for their breweries. Nebco is not the kind of brewery that's gonna go out of business. I worry about a hotel trying to buy out that land, and potentially going out of business, because they can't find customers, that's not gonna happen to a 20-plus-year establishment like Nebco, that already has such a huge following. I followed, you know, yes, newspaper articles are out there, there's also a whole ton of social media buzz, about people excited from, you know, southern New Haven County, from Fairfield County, about the possibility of coming up to West Haven, which is a lot easier to get to than the current location. So, I say this is a huge win for West Haven. As a District Two resident, right up the street from this proposed development, I speak strongly in favor of the brewery proposal.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Marilyn Wilkes, I live at 250 Ocean Avenue. I'm here wearing two hats tonight, first as a resident, and the second as Vice President of the Land Trust of West Haven. I attended the special meeting last Wednesday, and frankly, was embarrassed for the city, and felt badly for the developers, because they really could not present what they had planned to, due to the technical difficulties on the part of the city. And frankly, the residents really didn't get the full presentation, because of that. I think as a city, we really need to do better. Despite those difficulties, the New England Brewing Company's presentation was impressive, particularly their plans to involve the community, support various community efforts, and integrate the Savin Rock Museum into its business. I believe having Nebco lease the property would be a win for them, and a win for West Haven. The one critique I have, in the brief viewing of the drawing that they have, is it's a giant red building. Red is not a color for the shoreline. Aesthetics matter. We need to pay attention to aesthetics in the city, as it's developed. A giant red building looks like a dairy farm or a barn in Vermont. Blues and grays are the colors of the shoreline. Regarding the hotel project, a high-rise building is not a good fit for the landscape of the area, it's just not the right location. Now, I'm putting on my Land Trust hat. We are excited by Nebco's proposal, however, we are concerned, because the brewery will sit adjacent to the Land Trust easement property. We are particularly concerned about parking, and how that's going to work, as well as the effect on tra, uh, traffic. The current administration has a bad habit of not informing the Land Trust of its shoreline projects on easement property, and that's a problem. As this project moves forward, the Land Trust asks that the city, and Nebco, should that happen, keep us in the loop as plans develop. Thank you.
Just if I could, before the next speaker, just for a portion of information, so, the reason why these development projects are in front of the city council, to begin with, is because they're city-owned property, and the city council has to give the authority to have the mayor enter into financial negotiations with whoever the party is, in, in order to move it to a contract, and a next step. I just wanna make sure that the community knows that all of the other steps are still in place, so it's, this would still have to go through all of the planning and zoning steps that a normal development would have to. That will address things like aesthetics, which I don't disagree, but aesthetics, and, and parking, and, and things along those lines. So I just wanted to be clear that this is just one more added step, because it's city-owned property. Sir? Sorry?
Good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Lupali. I live at 85 Grove Road in North Haven. I'm a music teacher for West Haven Public Schools. I also happen to be a proud member of the cycling group Team Craft Beer, which is sponsored by Nebco. I come here this evening in full support of the New England Brewing Company occupying the space at the former Savin Rock Conference Center. Back in the early 2000s, craft breweries started out as an amenity, predominantly found in large cities. However, lately, they have been moving into much more rural communities, and the benefits have been astounding. Breweries have become engines of economic development. They do this by revitalizing old buildings that are no longer in use, and usually in areas with cheaper real estate, all in an effort to minimize startup costs. The startup of a brewery brings new job opportunities for skilled craftsmen and laborers, electricians, plumbers, masons, delivery personnel, et cetera. Relaxed laws and new technology now allow breweries to take advantage of things like outdoor beer gardens, and increased distribution. Unsurprisingly, distributing great beer in cans has created a demand for beer that has never been seen before. Successful breweries have become draws for local tourism, as beer drinkers have found their beer cans on store shelves. Many breweries regularly support local artists by hosting yoga classes, displaying art, and booking live musicians. Most breweries are kid and dog-friendly as well. This creates a much more comfortable family atmosphere than most bars and restaurants, which then leads to more social gatherings. Local breweries all across the U.S. are dedicated to supporting the communities that they inhabit. They do this by promoting a culture of involvement, collaboration, and social responsibility. Please consider letting New England Brewing Company come to West Haven, and let's bring back money and tourism to the Savin Rock area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Melly Garthwait, 22 Second Avenue, Sandy Point, West Haven. Thank you to Mayor Rossi, and to the entire council for listening to the public this evening. Since last week's special meeting on the Savin Rock Conference Center's property proposals, I have received numerous calls, messages, and texts from residents in District Two. Although I have not been sworn in yet to officially represent my district on the council, I have made a promise to every resident that I have met, that I would serve them to the best of my abilities. That is why I am here this evening. Although District Two residents have a broad range of what they would like to see happen with the Savin Rock Conference Center, there is one common theme amongst them all. They are feeling like this project is being rushed, and that there has not been enough time spent with the public, considering all aspects of each proposal. In short, from what I've heard from residents so far, it seems like 30% are for the hotel, 30% are for the brewery, 15% are for the event, or venue, 15% are for having the land protected by the Land Trust. Many of the residents are upset that they were not able, not made aware by the city of these proceedings, and had, had learned of them from neighbors as to what was about to happen. However, the residents immediately surrounding the Savin Rock Conference Center are the residents that I want to focus on this evening, because it's their quality of life that I'm most concerned about, because it will be heavily impacted by whichever project is chosen for the site. Residents along Kelsey Avenue and Campbell Thomas Boulevard already combat a serious noise pollution, especially when there are events held on or near the Savin Rock Conference Center, property and grounds. They are feeling extremely anxious and worried about the brewery being built on the site, because of the exponential increase in events that will be held there, which will result, result in not only a much heavier traffic flow, but also lots of pedestrians, and also the possibility of music from the venue. Residents do not want outdoor music at all. They have been combating noise pollution for a while, and this is not something that they want to be subjected to. The additional estimated 500,000 people visiting the site will bring all kinds of traffic conditions that the roads surrounding the site are not ready to endure, as lots of residents pointed out to me. Several residents have asked me to bring to the city a request for impact studies, those studies to include a noise assessment, a traffic assessment, and a study of how the massive increase of cars and trucks, including supply trucks, will, will impact the quality of their lives. Other residents have argued that although this is labeled a brewery, they are still serving alcohol, and they are worried about the safety of the area, especially with respect to pedestrian crossings, if there are parking lots outside of the immediate area, as well as questions on police president, presence, since many say they have been to upscale breweries, and have seen them get quite rowdy, especially much after dark. Residents on Kelsey are worried about an increase in amount of speeding that will be, residents on Kelsey are worried about an increased amount of speeding that will be all year-round, rather than just in the summer months, which is what they deal with now. They would like to see speed bumps installed, as well as additional stop signs to help deal with the enormous, enormous increased volume of traffic through their neighborhood, with any of these projects. Other residents are upset, because road qualities in West Haven haven't been well-maintained historically, and they are wondering how the increase, they, they're, sorry, excuse me, they're wondering how the increase will impact their neighborhoods. Some residents that have viewed the concept drawings of the brewery fear that it may not fit aesthetically with the surrounding area at all, which is what you've already mentioned here tonight. With respect to the hotel, all, with respect to the hotel, all the brewery, all, I'm sorry, with respect to the hotel, all the brewery, all this, all, sorry. With respect to the hotel and the brewery, they fear that it will not fit aesthetically in the surrounding area. The majority have stated that the three-to-four building would be more appropriate. All these residents want a more upscale, small boutique hotel, with a nice restaurant attached to it. The 15% that felt the event center would be more appropriate, said so because it would not be populated all throughout the week, but in general, on weekends, and special event nights, which would therefore not impact the quality of their life issues as much as a brewery or a hotel. Finally, the last bit of the 15%, who would like to see that area of shoreline protected with nothing built on it at all, are primary lifelong residents of West Haven, that have deep family roots to it. A few residents questioned, what is it that West Haven wants to be seen as? What, what do we want? What is our brand? What is our definitive brand? I think that is truly a question that needs to be studied at length, so that we can solve that dilemma once and for all. In conclusion, I would like to respectfully request that the council not take a vote on this project this evening, nor until at least a month after the new council has been sworn in. Seeing as the new council will be held accountable for this project, and that there are several of us that have not read the RFPs, the proposals, or any other supporting documentation for the site, I feel, as do many others, that we need to table this decision, so that the new council, as well as the public, can be more fully informed as to each project for the Savin Rock Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Melly.
Good evening, Council. Victor Boris, 170 Shingo Road. Just an observation that I saw, me working at Coca-Cola for almost 16 years, I used to batch the soda for 13 of those 16. Just something I feel that you guys should be able to ask them, is, all these machines and all these tanks that hold this soda, I mean, obviously, they gotta go somewhere. My main concern is the chemicals that are used to clean this, they gotta go somewhere. So they go down the drainage, I think that we should make sure that, you know, that this company that we do accept here in West Haven as a lease, that they make sure that all those chemicals are properly filtered, you know, that they're not going into our oceans, hurting our fish, hurting, you know, the people that go there. Or when they leave, they just leave a mess for us. So I think that, you know, this, I know that has to go through all the steps, but make sure that they follow in all that, because it's like you lease a car, right? You lease a car, you drive it, it's not yours, you do whatever you want. So I don't wanna see that happening here with us, that we get screwed with something like that. But I'm sure that you guys will, you know, make the right decision. Just something that I, well, I hope that you guys pay attention to these chemicals, they're not, they're not normal household chemicals, they're really bad, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Mary, we're in a, live at 158 Kelsey Avenue, and longtime West Haven resident. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I do wanna say that I would not wanna see a hotel down there. I would not wanna see five stories in front of Savin Rock. And I do believe that we've had problems with hotels. Look at the two hotels up on Sommo Road, actually, three of them. There are a lot of hotels, and I don't think we need a hotel. And I didn't know there was even a conference center on the table. I thought it was all related to a hotel. And I guess the last thing I would say is, 'cause I, I'm a little nervous, 'cause I didn't prepare anything, but I support the brewery. I support the brewery because it will give local jobs, we won't just have people coming in from out of town, staying here overnight. These will be West Haven people. And I like the fact that the hours are gonna be until 9 o'clock at night. That's what I was concerned about personally, like, if it was 11 or 12, that's way too late. But I think it's reasonable, and I also have been to their brewery several times, and I think it's really good, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dominic Genati, owner of Dive Bar and Restaurant in West Haven here. I figured I'd come here real quick to speak on behalf of Nebco. These guys have kind of grown their business over the last 20 years from the ground up, with respectful clientele that follow them. I mean, they have an awesome backing, they donate a lot to the communities, and I'm not talking like, a thousand bucks here, a thousand bucks here, I mean, I think last year alone, they donated almost a half a million dollars to Closer to Free Ride. I mean, I appreciate bringing in a local business, because they're the ones that donate to the community. So it's not all about the tax money, or who owns what, it's kind of a sense of community, right? So that's what West Haven thrives off of. Me being a business owner in town, I see that firsthand, so if I have a benefit of any kind, I mean, the West Haven community pulls together like crazy, I mean, it's amazing. So I don't feel like you'll get a sense of community bringing in a corporate hotel that- that doesn't really donate to anything. They have a presence in town, but that's pretty much it. I would almost guarantee that anybody who needed help with anything as far as sponsorship or help running an event, Nebco would probably be the first to step in. So that's really important to me. You know, I don't give any polit... You know, politics. I don't see any of those views. I'm not political. I just kinda... I'm shooting you in my opinion for what it's worth because I'm a local business owner. I've lived in West Haven a long time. I've grown up here since I was pretty much born, so... You know, that's my view on it. I'd rather see the local business who's growing and thriving come to town than a corporate hotel. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Much pleasure. Just so the public knows, it keeps coming up about the conference, about a conference center. That, as far as I know, is not something that is even on the table, so I don't know where that came from, so just wanted to let everybody know that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Ernie Adamo. I grew up in West Haven, but I live in Hampton, Connecticut now, but I know the area well. I gotta say, you know...
Can you give your address for the record, please?
Nineteen King Street.
Thank you.
I gotta say, you know, West Haven's been known for years for having one of the largest coastlines with little to no development. So I'm not sure exactly what a hotel's gonna bring in there for a handful of events a year, but you have somebody like Rob and this brewery. I've known Rob since pre-Nebco days, and I can't think of a more stand-up guy in the community in terms of what he does. I'm a member of the Closer to Free cycling team, what he does for the Smile Cancer Center, what he does for the scholarship, taking more people of color in the brewing industry with Sacred Heart University. Breweries have been anchors, from Portland, Oregon to Portland, Maine. Breweries go into neighborhoods, then restaurants go into neighborhoods, and people go into neighborhoods, and next thing you know, the neighborhood's developed. They bring in people, and they bring in good people. You know, they want to spend their money in the town. You'll go to the supermarket, you'll see, "Made in West Haven, Connecticut." What more do you want? It brings name recognition to the town. I think it's a no-brainer, really, to pick the brewery over the hotel. That's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Council. Craig Gilbert, 664 Third Avenue, West Haven. Been working at the brewery for close to fifteen years now, and I've been working in breweries and working in small bars longer before that. What I've noticed is the beer culture and the beer community. The beer community travels, and the beer community travels a lot. I'm the artistic element at the brewery. I do the labels and the T-shirt designs and stuff like that, but I also work in the tasting room where I talk to the people directly, and I'm talking to the customers one-on-one. And I've talked to people from all up and down the eastern seaboard and all around the country who have specifically pinpointed the New England Brewing Company to come and check out, or if they're just going up north to Massachusetts, or Vermont, or New Hampshire, and they type into their phones and say, "Hey, good places and good breweries in Connecticut." And we are always, New England Brewing is always in the top five. So people who know of us, even people who don't know of us, come to us. And when that happens, I usually end up telling them where to go, what to get, "Good taco place." "What's a good club?" And I would love to just sit there behind the bar some night and say, "Yeah, just take a walk down the sidewalk, go to Stowe's, get a lobster roll." And that's what's gonna happen with West Haven. You're gonna be bringing in a lot of people, and it's going to spread out to the other businesses around here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Paterna, 16 Ocean Avenue, West Haven, also a business owner in town for seventeen years. I'll be brief. Sorry. I'll be brief. I'm in favor of Nebco, and I think that any business that can bring people to the area, especially a business that's been established for twenty years that is known as a family business, and if you've ever been to any of their... If you've been to their places, you know that it's a finely-run establishment, anything that shines a bright light on West Haven in a positive way, especially highlighting the golden jewel of our town, which is our beach, is really great for West Haven. Bringing people from the local area, from Fairfield County, from the valley, from the shoreline, and bringing them over here to see, to see how beautiful West Haven is, only better's our... Only better's the community, only better's property values, only does good things. And I know that Marty Giuliano, who I know personally, will ensure that it's gonna be done right, and it's gonna be done safely, and people are gonna benefit from it in just about every possible way. So it's a no-brainer. You're leasing it to them, you're not selling it to them, and, you know, it's a win-win-win for everybody.
Good evening, Council members. My name is David Babbitts. Although I live in Bethany, my office is right here on Main Street, just two doors down. I've been practicing law here in the center since 1994, first with Thopone and Lyons, and now with Ginsberg and Babbitts.
I'm sorry, Mr. Babbitts. Just which the... What number, Main Street?
Three seven seven.
Thank you.
I met Rob Leonard back in 2002 through a mutual friend. Rob was looking for an attorney to help him with the formation of his new business venture, a brewery. I was intrigued. Since that time, I've helped New England Brewing Company with their various legal services, working with Rob and other members of his management team. During that time, Rob and I have become good friends. I'm also a patron of the brewery and a participant in some of its charitable community activities. Marty Giuliano, the brewery's director of business development, and also a close friend, inspired me to get back on a bicycle a few years ago. I'm now a proud member of the Team Craft Beer, a 200-plus-member cycling team, captained by Marty, sponsored by New England Brewing, that has raised over $800,000 for the Smile Cancer Hospital, a lead team in the Closer to Free Ride fundraising event. Our team has ridden by the Rock Street property many times. Rob is a wonderful person. Rob cares immensely about his family, his staff, his community, and his beer. That shows in the brewery's operations, in the management team he's assembled, in the staff he employs, and in the philanthropic activities the company supports. I have no doubt that inviting New England Brewing into our city is a fantastic choice and that the facility will bring many great things to our shore.
Hey, everybody. My name's Mike Markowski. I live at 259 Beach Street. And full disclosure, I am an employee at the brewery and have been for three years. And I just wanted to share my perspective on Rob Leonard and the type of person that West Haven would be gaining. He's just the type of owner that he comes down and says hello to every single one of his employees every single day, and he does a lot more for us than he really has to. And he treats his community the same way, and I just think West Haven would be very lucky to gain someone like Rob Leonard.
Hi, Scott Pisigni, living Bailey Drive. I was a salesman in the beer industry, so I know Rob and Marty personally, and I think this brewery would be a destination for people to come and bring people to our beautiful city, and I'm definitely in favor of it.
Good evening. Steve Johnstone, 168 Jones Hill Road. As I've sat here for the past couple weeks, attending as many meetings as possible, as kind of a way to train myself, for those who don't know behind me, or for those who are watching at home, I have the unique but distinguished privilege in a couple weeks to represent District Ten. It's interesting. When you look at the history of West Haven, it's all across the board. And for those who know or who don't know, my family's been here hundreds of years before West Haven was even West Haven. I took upon myself, with everything going on, to make some certain phone calls. I've asked family members and relatives that don't even live around here anymore to longtime family friends from the ages of eighteen all the way up to ninety-nine. There is one trend we have in common in West Haven. Instead of measuring twice and cutting once, we cut two or three times and sometimes don't measure at all. I am not here to tell you that I'm in favor of the brewery or the hotel. In my personal fantasy world, I wish, and this is nothing personal to anybody in this room or in the city, I wish we could have both. I wish we could put both where Jimmy's and the conference center currently is, but right now, that's not on the table. I will tell you this. There's a reason why they teach history in schools, and my cousin, who I had the distinct privilege of having as a high school teacher, will tell you, "I hated history early, but I love it now." The reason why we teach history is so we don't repeat the same mistakes we made. Believe me when I tell you, I am all for economic development. I am all for lowering taxes. Lord knows, when I inherit the Hubbard homestead one day, I'll be paying over $12,000 just for that property a year. But I urge the council, and I urge all involved, we're on the clock, but we can't rush the decision. For those who play fantasy football like myself, your first two picks in the draft will depict your success. And right now, we have two picks, and our turn is nearing. So I urge everyone here, who I do look forward to working with, can we once change the history of what we are known to do to our surrounding towns, and can we actually measure two or three times and just cut once?
Anyone else from the public like to speak?
Hi, Heather Shea, 91 Rockefeller Avenue. I'll make this brief. I just want to say I really do support the brewery. I agree with Mr. Johnstone that I think a hotel would be great down the line, maybe, where Debonair is, build that area up. But right now, we're continuing to develop, and we're bringing people here. We need to do that before we get to the hotel. Simply my opinion, and I would like some apple cider beer, just a request. But anyway, that's my opinion. I fully support brewery.
Rennie Louizel, 5 Trumbull Street, West Haven, Connecticut. I'm very much in favor of Nebco being here. I do have a question, though. Throughout their presentation, and in trying to do some research, I would like very much to know if, if or in what way they are a sustainable brewery. Breweries use natural resources almost more than any other industry, so I would just like to know that. And if they do plan on becoming a sustainable brewery, I'm sure the land trust would be very interested in working with them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Carr, 29 Lake Street. And my office is in Milford. I'm a real estate self-employed person for twenty-five years, so I spend a lot of time working as a fiduciary agent, which means what I do is I have to always figure out what's the best interest of our clients. So I think you all have the same job because you have to figure out the best interest of our clients that are all standing behind me tonight. And there's a lot of questions we have to answer about the right decisions about the ARPA funding right now, and I'm hoping we're all gonna find the best use of this, and I hope it's a time that we're gonna be able to move into the future with good news and responsibility and transparency as we try to put some things behind us. There was a public notice in the local paper that mentioned changing the commercial zoning to 1,300 square foot per unit.
Hey, Mr. Carr. This is only... You could say that in normal public session. Right now, this public session is about the Savin Rock Conference Center only, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna stay on that. Regarding the hotel or brewery, I support the Nebco, and I went there when they were across the street before they moved to their new location. I remember sitting around with some of the brewers, because I like to make homebrew. And, you know, I'd say Seagag is my go-to beer when I go out, and I think it's a great thing. And my idea of this, and I'm sure no one's gonna like this, is that that unit would be a mixed-use place, and I'd like to see it be a taproom more than the manufacturing facility. I'd love to see the manufacturing facility in Owling Town. I'd love to see a connection between the two places somehow. And I think there's a lot of things that that location can be used for, and maybe the Nebco people would want to integrate some of these into it. I'd like to see it be a place that highlights West Haven restaurants. I'd like to see our food of our existing businesses be highlighted there, and I'd like to see our food trucks be from West Haven. I always hate it when I see all these out-of-town food trucks. I don't see local restaurants at our events. And I'd like it to be a welcome center, which it would be, obviously, and, you know, and would somehow keep the Savin Rock Carousel in there. So I think those are all important things to do, and, you know, there's other items on the thing. But I do support the brewery over the hotel, and there is a lot of positive community there, and I think that's a good thing. But at the same time, I appreciate what Mr. Johnstone said, is there's no really reason to just move fast, because this is an incredible opportunity, and many of you have heard me say that the foundation of our economic development is our open space, and the shoreline is the key asset that West Haven has. It's the one thing that when we look all the way from Bridgeport out to Madison, you say, "Well, tourism, you know, what's gonna happen?" So anytime someone thinks about tourism, they look at our region. You know, we're in a region of the Southern Connecticut Regional Economic Acceleration Group in New Haven. I go to their meetings sometimes, and we're a region, we're not a city. We're part of this whole area, and we need to think about ourselves that way, and how are we gonna unique leverage our unique location? And we always talk about our boardwalk. I think of this more as an accessible beachwalk, because there are no boards, but it is one of the few places that a person of any ability can appreciate the shoreline, because it's paved. Anybody, no matter how they get around, can get down there and appreciate the beach. It's an incredible value, and the open space, incredible value. People, you go to New York City, High Line, they built a park because they don't have open space. So I could go on, but I'm not going to in the, you know, respect for everybody's time. I appreciate all your work that you're here. I know it's a hard job, and... But I do support the Nebco over the hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this?
Hello, my name's Bob Maynard, 37 Roosevelt Avenue. To be honest with you, I don't often come to these, but I feel this is very important. Nebco is a great place. They have a great reputation, the charitable contributions that they've made. It really is a great organization. I live at West Haven. I've been here for thirty years, and I see a lot of businesses, failures, Debonair, Captain's Gallery. I mean, it's a shame what's happened to this town. Just I've been here thirty years, probably where I live, and I just think it's such a great opportunity to feel, see something finally starting, going in, being developed in the town. I think it's a great fit. It's gonna bring people in. It's gonna help our development. It's gonna put us on the map and say, "Hey, this is a good place. Let's get other businesses in here." I just want to see improvement, and I think it's a great step towards that improvement. Thank you, everybody.
Is there anyone else from the public would like to speak? For a second time, is there anyone from the public?
Nancy Rossi, 12 Robin Road, came to speak, obviously, about the brewery, but what was said in the beginning in the first speaker's remarks. As somebody who dealt with this RFP process firsthand, no, nobody's was lost, nobody's was misplaced. All three, three, were looked at, reviewed by the committee, and vetted, and we selected the brewery at the end of this. So I want to be very, very clear, because I hate when somebody comes up, hasn't called me to ask me, or as far as I know, anyone in my office, so please don't assume something. Ask the question. I'll be happy to answer the question. And while I'm up here, I'm 100% behind the brewery. And while I'm up here, I'm 100% behind the brewery. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public would like to speak? For a second time, anyone from the public? For a third and final time? Okay, that being said, public session is now over, it is 7:05.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. That concludes the public lands committee hearing regarding the Savin Rock Conference Center property proposal. The next public hearing is the redevelopment committee on a public hearing on the draft commercial economic incentive program. Any comments from the public would be specific to that proposal. I'll turn the meeting over to the redevelopment committee chairperson, Councilwoman O'Connor.
The time right now is 7:06. The hearing for the redevelopment committee is now starting. Present is Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Mitch, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Cheney, and myself as chairman. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on the redevelopment? Yes, Mrs. Boliteri?
Yeah, I knew where Pat was sitting.
Good evening, Pat Boliteri, 215 West Walk. At the November 15 city council meeting, I gave my opinion why I didn't think using ARPA funds for the lease subsidy program was a good idea.
Sorry, Pat, just, you don't even have to hold it, you should be all right.
Now that I've read the RFP, which was on the city website, entitled "A Financial Institution to Manage a Lease Subsidy Program for the City of West Haven," I wanted to add a few more points. First, the city previously claimed that this program is a little investment, so if the city is looking for a bank or similar company to develop and administer the program, which could go on for 10 years, I have a concern that the cost of running the program could be more than the program itself. Second, with our poor track record and personnel churn, both at City Hall and at the bank, who is going to oversee the bank for 10 years? Excuse me. Third, even if this program were within Treasury guidelines, which is uncertain, Treasury guidelines recommend using ARPA funds for finite projects, which have a start and finish, rather than for projects requiring ongoing maintenance. Even though this project has a finish, the finish date isn't until 10 years from now. So the long horizon of this project, and the fact that it is based on recurring lease payments, gives it the character of an ongoing project. Perhaps you have already considered these factors? If not, I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's Christine Sullivan-Gallo. I'm the chairman of the West Haven Economic Development Commission, and Ron asked me to be here last week and meet with the commission, and-
Ms. Gallo, can we please have your address for the record?
Oh, 52 Richmond.
Thank you.
Ron asked me to get some input from the commission, and this is, we've got a few points here. The commission appreciates the importance placed on supporting business growth in West Haven, but we have a few items of concern. Number one, before initiating new economic incentives, the commission would like to be updated on recently adopted incentives such as the enterprise zone. Number two, the proposal appears to give any small business option less attention. I know it was mentioned that small business could be a part of it, but it seemed to be more geared to bigger business. The Economic Development Commission would like to suggest an option that provides subsidized rent, and we're thinking specifically of vacant commercial space in Allentown, the new, the new construction there. Number three, the commission would like to reserve a portion of the funds for businesses that are not currently represented in the community, excluding certain concerns. We thought of cannabis shops. The goal is to increase retail and Main Street-type shops in the city that will attract newcomers to West Haven, as well as improve the quality of life of residents. Number four, we wholeheartedly agree with council comments that there is a need for an adequately-staffed economic development role. Number five, the Economic Development Commission would like to see a list of current vacant properties available in the city which might benefit from the proposed incentive. We asked for this about a year ago, we've never gotten anything. Number six, the commission would like to have the funds solely support the redevelopment of existing vacant space, rather than supporting new construction. This direction would prevent a surplus of new construction that may remain vacant, and in any case, would not help fill vacancies that already exist. And this really is aside, but number seven, the Economic Development Commission has identified strategies to support in our assigned task of branding and marketing the city. To effect change, the commission needs a budget to support its efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is another meeting, so I can speak again. So I'm going to be on target this time, because this is where we're going to talk about the ARPA. So I've read this-
No, 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 this is about the leasing program that would be using ARPA funds. It's just specified to that, though, but it's not using ARPA funds for everything.
No, just for part of it, and the leasing funds are coming from ARPA.
No. We've not voted on that.
No.
That hasn't been determined yet, Mr. Carr.
Okay. Well, if they were, okay, so I would just, I'll take that out of that. So I'd like to know, let me see, I watched the November 15 meeting on the, where I saw Lee Turnin speak. I'd like to know where I can read a report about which businesses would get funding. Is this the first, is this first-come, first-served funding? How is it advertised? What's the closing date? Will income expense reports of businesses and the financial positions of owners who get this funding be a matter of public record? Does everybody who may qualify know about it? And does this create economic development? My definition of economic development is the leverage and marketing of specific values a community's offers. And, let me see, and the other thing about the ARPA money is that the, we have till 2024 to spend it. This is on page 26, 811 of the Federal Register, and performance evaluation ended in 2026. There is lots of time to do this. But I would like to say that accountability for spending is a, is a prime concern for, I think, everybody at this point, and everybody wants to know where the ARPA funds are going to be spending, spent. So I listened to Lee Turnin on November 15, talk about the Sawmill Road development and the bonding, and the goal of that economic development project specifically, and how that was accomplished by bringing in all the new stores on Sawmill Road. So that was a very successful program in its own. But the real question is, what does the community want in terms of development? We never hear the end of the call for development, but, and there was talk about the lease incentives and all that, and talk about lease rates, and how people would get it back. And I think we have to evaluate paying upfront, instead of investing, compared to investing in public partnerships, and quality of life for those most impacted. And that's a lot of what's in the ARPA, too, is, you know, the real use of the funds, which is why I really encourage people to print this thing out and spend some time reading it. It's very interesting. And that's really what I'd like to see for economic development. I'd like to see things, stores don't just attract people unless there's a whole experience like Yale did on Chapel Street. It changed the whole value of that area over 20 years. The beach attracts people, and lots of them just come to the beach. And, you know, other economic development I'd like to see is traffic circles that would calm traffic. I'd like to see what they did on Orange Street and College Street, where they closed down the road, they made it a single lane, people are out there eating, pedestrian-friendly zone. These are all economic and commercial incentives, too. So I think we really have to think very broadly about what's going on, and that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the redevelopment?
Good evening. Robin Parsons, 121 Bellevue Avenue. I'm not sure if my comments are pertinent, it was confusing to me exactly how these meetings were going to be structured, and I had kind of prepared remarks for just a general city council meeting, but I'm going to extract from them to make it more-
Because we are having a regular city council meeting after this.
You are?
Yes, and we are having a public session. If you wanted to wait and say everything all at once, that's acceptable.
That sounds great.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this specific leasing program that has not been voted on yet? For a second time, is anyone else want to speak on the redevelopment? All right, the redevelopment committee? Oh, for the third time, is there anyone else? All right, the redevelopment committee, public hearing, I'm sorry, is closed at 7:16.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Connor. The next public hearing is the Public Lands Committee sale of Stiles School mixed-use hydroponic proposal. Again, the comments will be specific to this item at this point. And I'll turn the meeting over to the Public Lands Chairman, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 7:16, and public session is now open. Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? For a second time, does anyone from the public like to speak? For the third and final time? Wow, this is a nice one. Oh, I didn't under the wire, okay. Right ahead.
And this is, oh, for Shabias, 155 Ball Hill Lane. As far as the sale of Stiles School, is electricity still on? I'm just, I just want to know. I've had that question like four years ago. Is electricity still running in that school? Is anyone aware of-
I don't know that offhand.
Because I know it was, and it hadn't been sold, but yet, you know, the alarm system and the electric, the lights were still on, and I was wondering, who was actually paying for that building while it was unoccupied? I just wanted to know, again, where the lights are on, electricity-
I don't know if the electricity is on or not, I can look into that and find out.
And who's paying for it?
Okay. Anybody else from the public would like to speak on this? Mr. Carr?
My only question about Stiles Street School was, if it's sold as a hydroponic place, and that person decides to go out of business, and they sell it to somebody else, what happens? Because I always think about the old high school that's apartments, and I look at other old buildings that are now that. So, I mean, it's, again, you know, sell, sell the building, sell this great big building that's what, six tenths of a mile from Amtrak in New York City on a Metro North? Is that a, is that a business center? Is that a business center someone can walk to from Amtrak? I mean, I think about the same thing for the Armstrong Building, because this is what the transit-oriented development is all about, is how do we leverage the train station? That's our asset. So I don't know, it's hard to say, I'm not in the position to make a decision, but I did write one thing a while ago about that being a shared workspace type of thing, where it would be a business incubator. So that was my thought on that a long time ago. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. I think I got a response to that, right? I didn't hear you.
The alarm is run by electricity, that's the only thing, there's no lights or stuff.
Okay. Um, we have, we do have, the alarm is the only thing that is on for Stiles School. That is it?
Is that run by electricity?
Yes, yeah. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Let me just ask a question, but-
Yeah, can you, I just need you to come up, give your name and address, please.
My name's Rich Hebert, I live at 166 Bloom Street. And what my question is, if all you have is alarms in there, what about the water? The water freezes, and, you know, that was a big problem.
I believe the water's been turned off a long time ago.
The water's all gone.
The water's all off and drained, yep. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter? For a second time, anyone else? For a third and final time? Seeing none, public session is closed, it is now 7:21. Chairman?
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Before we start our regular council meeting, I would just like to mention to the community, as I know that a few people have mentioned it already, that this is the last council meeting of this current term. Our next regular council meeting will, will be the new term, which will be the new council. We have four council members, that this is their last meeting, that are here tonight, Councilman Conlin, Councilwoman Johnston, Councilwoman Finelli, and Councilman Cohen. And I will defer to them if they would like to say a few words before we continue on. Councilman Conlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had the extreme pleasure of serving a prior term on this council about a decade ago, which gives me a bit of a base of reference. And I must say that this particular iteration of the council is comprised of a group of people who are very professional and very goal-oriented, such that I have a great deal of confidence in the present mayor administration and 70% of this council returning, that the City of West Haven leadership is one that we can have confidence in. With that, as I retire again from elective office, I would like to say two things to the mayor and the council, and that is, thank you, and keep on keeping on. Thank you.
Just to keep everybody jumping, I'll skip around. Councilwoman Finelli?
Thank you. I, I agree with everything that Councilman Conlin said. It's been an absolute pleasure working with everyone on this council. And to be honest, when I was first elected, everyone knew Robert and I were on the same ticket together, and it was a little apprehensive about coming onto the council with people who were kind of on the opposing team, if you will, which, working with these people has just given me the utmost confidence in the future of West Haven, and kind of the ability for everyone to come together and work together regardless of, you know, you were on this ticket or that slate, or. And I really have nothing but the utmost respect for everyone here. They are wonderful people, and I know everyone has the best intentions of the city, and everyone really wants to do the right thing. And I'm, I'm going to miss working with all of you, and, yeah, but I am confident that those that are continuing to stay on the council will bring the city in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilpeople. There's going to be one thing for sure, as a councilperson, when I'm not here, the meetings are going to be a lot shorter. But you know what? I came in a couple of years ago, and I, at the time, I said it back then, I say it now, and I've said it for decades, Republican, Democrat, unaffiliated, independent, I could care less. It's good people, good results, because we're all in this together, and I truly believe that. You know, I'm a lifetime West Haven resident, West Haven's my heart and soul, West Haven is my first love. And you've all heard me say this, all, at the time, all 2,860 doors that I knocked on to get here, I didn't- on to get here, at every door, I basically said, and I said it over and over again, and I'll say it to my grave, that public service is a blessing that I hold dear, and I will never take that for granted. Being a community servant is just, it's one of the highlights of my life. It's one of the most important things through my life, well before I became a councilperson, well after, I am probably on a beach getting a tan in retirement somewhere in Tahiti. It'll always be that way for me. I will never take it for granted. You know, every councilperson here, we may have differences from time to time, but for the most part, for most of the councilpeople up here, it has been respectful, it has been knowledgeable, it has been intelligent, it has been thoughtful, and I've just been so proud to be part of this council. You know, I, I was probably one of those guys that, I was probably as surprised as anybody else that I got elected. But one thing it did for me, I've always loved West Haven, but it made me fall in love with so many residents and so much of the community all over again. And my, my heart is warm. I am so, so privileged and so in love with the city that all I can say to everybody is thank you, God bless you, we're all in this together. Thank you so much.
And last but certainly not least, Councilwoman Johnston?
Thank you. I'll be briefer. I just want to, first of all, my, my parents raised me to work really hard, to take pride in everything that I do and be solution-based, and if you're just going to complain, get involved. And that's really the reason that I, you know, decided to run for council was, you know, I, I see problems and I, and I want to fix them. And I learned a lot. I met a lot of really cool people, not just up here, but out in the district and in the city. I learned a lot about how things operate and don't operate sometimes. But I, I just want to say thank you to everyone here that's, that helped me in the beginning. Councilwoman Hosky literally sat with me and went through, you know, page by page of packets and talked about sort of how things operate. I've been able to call other people at any time, and, and I, I just really appreciate that collegiality, which has been echoed throughout tonight. And I also just want to say, I see some young people in the audience, you know, if you want to make a change, then get out there and do something, and don't just complain about it. There's, there's work to be done. And I, yeah, there's a lot of smart, dedicated, though. Other thing I want to say is, like, I just want to acknowledge that this is most of our, like, most people up here either have a full-time job, a business, a foundation to run, kids to raise, and it's really hard work. And I appreciate all of the hard work you guys have all done for the city, and I thank people for trusting me with this position.
Thank you all very much. I think I could speak on behalf of the council, how valuable your input and your collaboration and your dedication has been over this term. I sincerely appreciate each and every one of you and, and the commitment you have to the community, and the commitment I know that you're going to continue to have to the community in whatever role happens next. So, thank you all very much. Okay, at this point, before we enter into public session, I would like to make a motion, an amendment to the agenda and executive session at number two, legal review Savin Rock Conference Center property, and move executive session to after the finance committee meeting. Do I have that motion?
No, she makes the motion.
Shake, pick one, okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the addition and moving of the executive session? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're only a half an hour behind, so that's not bad. We're entering into public comment. Again, if you want to speak, please raise your hand, give your name and address for the record, be respectful to the council, and I think pretty much everybody has seen the last three public hearings here, so we know how it works. Yeah? Come on up.
Mary Ann Starks, 81 Main Street. So, I'm here to talk about the Haven Project, one of my pet peeves, because I live right there and look at it all the time. So, just background for myself, it was initiated in 2014 with then-Mayor Ed O'Brien, the city of West Haven, and Greenwich developer Sheldon Gordon from the Gordon Group, who's now deceased. And it's just blight, in my opinion. It's a lot of blight. And I've been in West Haven for 36 years, and that whole neighborhood hasn't exactly been great, but now it feels like Detroit to me. So, a couple of weeks ago, the town attorney reported that an inter-local agreement was sent to the Simon Group, which I'm assuming is the new developer. And my question is, what is in the agreement? And that's for you, Mayor, I guess, or anyone.
Yeah, I mean, the mayor would be happy after public session to reach back to you, and it's not a, it's not a question-and-answer session.
Oh, I, I apologize.
Yeah, no, no, no worries. But, but just because we don't answer now, we'll make sure that we follow up with you. So, when you sit back down, someone will grab your phone number if they can't answer the question now for you.
So, I have several questions. Shall I give them?
You can put them on the record. Yeah, you could ask them on the record.
Okay, I'd like them to be on record. So, one was just what is in that agreement? I, I don't know what it is, because this was just stated. And the other one was that it sounded like the, Mr. Tyrenin, I guess it was, had said that he was waiting for a response in two weeks, and this is two weeks now. So, is there, has there been a response? And if so, what is it? And the other thing was, if no response was made, he did say that there was going to be steps taken, so I wondered what those steps were and what's the timeline? Because it feels like this Haven Project has just gone on and on. Nothing's been done in the last three months. I did talk with Dorinda Borer, who said that she had a conversation with someone at the Simon Group, and they said that nothing will be done before January. But does that mean something will be done after January? And if so, what is it? And what is the timeline for taking down all these buildings? The other question I have is that I wondered what the current tax base is of that whole Haven Project? And what would happen to that if all those buildings were taken down? How does that affect us tax-wise? Is that one of the barriers to why we're not pushing for them to take it down? Or why aren't we charging them with blight? So, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get those answers for you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address the city council for a second time? Uh, Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the second time, good evening. I'm Robin Parsons, 121 Bellevue. I've heard snippets of things from other people so far tonight that, that seem to intersect with what I'm concerned with. We moved really quickly from the dreadful news about the theft of the COVID funds into economic incentives and economic development. And I have real concerns because, like Rose Russo and Pat Volitieri, who've spoken, I am alarmed that our municipal government is really not focusing on the necessary operational reforms that haven't been implemented in the past three and a half years. I mean, what is supposed to have gone on with Mike Demassa is only the logical outcome of ongoing inattention and, kind of in my view, ignoring the canaries in the coal mine. Some of the canaries that I'm personally aware of relate to the Sustainable CT Initiative. Four years ago, I came before this body to urge participation in what was then a new statewide initiative oriented towards making Connecticut municipalities more efficient, resilient, and inclusive. The council approved participation, and then it was left to me to try to identify the areas where West Haven was and was not engaging in best practices. Among the first things identified were failure to use the free portfolio manager system for benchmarking and tracking energy use, the absence of municipal solid waste data on the city's website, less than adequate communications with the public, and no formal efforts to incorporate equity concerns in the way the city functioned. What is the record since? We are still not using the portfolio manager tool. No municipal solid waste figures have been published since I last gave them to Mike Walsh in 2019. Our 11-year-old energy plan has still not been formally adopted by the council, and the people the mayor appointed to the Energy Commission have yet to hold a single meeting, much less put together a set of goals and recommendations for achieving them. The no-smoking stencils that we were promised in 2019 are still not on the regulation signs at the beach. No updates on wildlife guards were published in all of 2021, and textile recycling promised as imminent in 2019 is still in the works. The Allentown Plan, this is the single endeavor for which we got credit for incorporating recommended equity procedures, has stalled. Nothing has happened. Even the CT visit site hasn't been kept up to date. So, what is the point of my saying all of this? The point is that the only way it is possible to be unaware of these things is if you have no systems for tracking them. Perhaps that was why I was not even notified when the city moved the Sustainable CT effort in-house. Although West Haven applied for and received Bronze Certification again this year, it was accomplished largely by substituting different actions for those that were dropped, which is the clearest possible sign of an absence of systematic reform. And of course, there are many anecdotal examples of this as well, as with the recent clearcutting of the Pollinator Garden at South Street, even though it was on the list of beautification sites given to Ernie Chiarelli, and it had a prominent sign identifying it. We have money to buy new park signs, but not to make sure our regulatory information is clear and accessible. We have time to meet with other officials for photo ops, but no time to work on a strategic plan. And now we have COVID, ARPA, and infrastructure funding coming down the pike and finding us with our operational pants down. This is my opinion. A ton of money without a vision, without a strategic plan, and before our house is in order, looks like another invitation to disaster. Please consider the examples I have given you and ask yourselves whether it might not be ongoing management failure that kneecaps West Haven and gives us a public black eye. Being a competent accountant, a competent lawyer, a competent former state representative, none of those things make you a competent manager. People who aren't professional managers need to rely on systems and procedures that tell them how to manage for efficiency and improving results. Can you imagine any other multimillion-dollar enterprise that expects success without a strategic plan, priorities, and expertise? I can't. With both the MARB and the Sustainable CT Initiative, West Haven has, in my view, looked two gift horses in the mouth. You heard the MARB's recent comments on what they have been asking for from West Haven but haven't received, and you surely heard Frank Zuplinsky say he had been looking for written policies and procedures since he was hired and found none. It's not reasonable to expect a city to operate efficiently and securely without them. My ask, as they say, is for the council to explore municipal performance management approaches to planning, budgeting, and municipal operations before making any plans to spend all this money. Invite an expert in to explain the process. I totally believe West Haven's problems can be fixed with will and honest work, but it's going to take a commitment to reform instead of just going along with the way things are. What West Haven needs, before jumping on a development juggernaut, is structure for better management. In closing, because I really don't like being Cassandra, I really would like to be very hopeful and optimistic about things, I'm going to, I'm going to close by say, reminding you of something that the writer Carlos Fuentes once wrote, which is that criticism is a form of optimism. Because when you speak truthfully about the shortcomings of your society, you show your faith in the possibility of improvement. I fervently hope you take this possibility seriously. I thank you for your time, and I wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Robin, for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to? Yes, Marilyn.
Sorry. Since I'm here, I thought I'd come back up. Marilyn Wilks, 220 Ocean Avenue. I have to say, like the woman from Main Street, I am wanting answers about the Haven as well. I, I drive past there almost every day on my way to work, years now, years now. It's appalling. It looks like a bombed-out city. I feel terrible for the people who live in that neighborhood. And what I feel most badly about is the fact that the residents in West Haven don't know what's going on. No one knows what's going on there. It's a big mystery. There's no communication about what's going on, none, zero, zip. Why? Why can we not know what's going on there? Why does that continue to be like that year after year? It's an embarrassment for the city, and it's terrible for the residents of the city. Secondly, there is openings on the Economic Development Commission, and I think there's openings on other commissions in the city as well. And my question there is, as someone who has been nominated for the Economic Development Commission, why, why has it taken months, months, for anyone to get back to the people on that committee as to whether or not I'm going to be appointed or not? There's significant issues here, significant issues where opportunities are, are being passed up, people are not being communicated with, and it's appalling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilks, for your comments. Ms. Biais?
Say my name again, address?
Please.
Port Shabias, 155 Bull Hill Lane. And I would just like to speak on a letter that I had come across, and it was from the State of Connecticut OPM Office of Policy and Management, and it was to the mayor. And it stated that the purpose of the letter was to follow up on a September 17 meet, letter to you, the mayor, in which it was advised to the city to provide OPM with a plan for resolving prior-year audit findings and for addressing persistent outstanding items in fiscal year 2021. Memorandum of Agreement between the City and OPM, and the request was reiterated and affirmed by members of the MARB at the October 6, 2021, and November 3, 2021 board meeting. And as of Friday, November 12, 2021, the office had only received a response from the city regarding issues related to purchasing function. And however, there were still remaining open items related to audit findings, the Personnel Department, staff. department, staff training on the munis financial system, and staffing of the finance department. The correspondence is formal notification that the municipal restructuring funds will not, I repeat, the municipal restructuring funds will not be distributed until the city is in full compliance with the MOA and until the city's annual financial audit and the Cohen of, Cohen Riznick audit are both completed. Further, the city has been placed on notice that if either audit indicates that the city's delays in taking corrective actions to address audit findings or contributing factors to any misuse of COVID relief funds, those conclusions would warrant withholdings of the MRF, which are the funds. The city's improvements is to balance, to its balance sheet and overall financial condition have been recognized, both OPM and the MARB have been consistent in urging the city to strengthen its financial management infrastructure by hiring the necessary staff to support that infrastructure and implementing and enforcing necessary internal control systems. OPM and the MARB have been persistent in exhorting the city to take steps to resolve audit findings and make improvements outlined in the city's memorandum of agreement with OPM. OPM has consistently supported the city in those efforts. There is no question that the city must fulfill the requirements of the OMA and to do so with the greatest of urgency. As been repeatedly requested, the city must submit a full plan for achieving compliance that commits to deadlines, assigned responsibilities for completing tasks, and ensures accountability in regular reporting. This plan must include steps and timelines for hiring any positions deemed necessary for ensuring proper control in the areas of finance and procurement. Staffing to adequate levels should not be delayed to the next budget. Current vacancies and any additional needed positions should be filled with qualified individuals as quickly as responsible recruitment process will allow. If necessary, the city's contingency funds should not be made available to cover any related unbudgeted salary and benefit expenses for the remainder of the current fiscal year. And with all this being said, and we all know that President Biden signed the infrastructure bill, so would we also be in jeopardy of receiving those funds because of the lack of responsibility in watching our finances? Is that a possibility?
Ms. Baez, you know this is not a question-and-answer session, right? So if you could just leave your comments, and if there's a question you'd like us to get back to you on like that, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the City Council for a second? Mr. Hickey?
Michael Hickey, 32 Bungalow Lane. Two weeks ago when I came here, I had said that the city had cut a check for $500,000 to Allentown, which wasn't supposed to be. I was, I guess I was wrong, and the chair corrected me that the $500,000 came out of the Equipment Replacement Fund for Allentown and went into the Retirement Fund. Is that correct?
Mr. Hickey, I'm gonna tell you the same thing I told Ms. Baez. It's not a question-and-answer session.
Yes, that's what you said two weeks ago. That's what you said two weeks ago. People already reminded me.
If you want me to correct, if you want me to correct the record again, I'll correct the record again for you. That it did not come out of that fund, and actually, the Allentown taxpayers had a little bit more of a tax increase to make up for that funding.
When you play and you move money around, it shouldn't be moved around. That's why the city gets into trouble, it gets it. If it's designated for a certain thing, it stays there. Don't move funds around, because that's what you always do. And the next thing you know, we wound up short. I'll let that go because I don't live in Allentown. It means the Allentown people have to fight that. I got something that dared me and it called climate change. The Build Back Better Bill that Mr. Biden has out there is going to devastate the middle class if it gets passed. About two years ago, I came to you people and said, every, in all the information I had gotten, that I surmise that the Earth's axis had shifted. Well, about a month ago, it was confirmed. Only the scientists put it this way, because of climate change, the axis shifted. It's not true. The axis always shifts on this earth. All scientists know that. It does it from the time of, from the beginning of time. The weather has changed because the axis shifted, and Mother Nature's trying to straighten herself out. But when she shifted, she, the core inside also shifted. Anybody noticed that there's three brand-new volcanoes on Earth? Because they found thin areas across where they could get and release the pressure. That's a phenomenon that always happens to this earth. The polar caps. Well, the polar caps are disappearing. Absolutely right. You know why? Because it's the first time Earth has ever had polar caps. There isn't a scientist on this earth to argue that point. The glacier you see melting now was the very glacier that used to be on top of Connecticut, a mile thick. It's moving, and it's going back to what Earth used to be. This is what Mother Nature does. Worried about a greenhouse effect? I'm not. Take a look at the population on this earth. We need to go into a greenhouse effect, because two of the greatest land masses in the world that'll be able to be farmed, one in Canada and the other in Siberia, will be able to be farmed to feed a population that will grow close to 13 to 14 billion people. Without it, you're not going to survive. I got Mr. John Kerry there who's running around trying to get us into climate, Paris climate thing. That's crazy. That's nothing more than picking the American people's pockets for almost $3 trillion. Look where it's going. It has nothing going to stop from climate change. It's to take our money and put it in the pockets of third-world countries that rob us blind anyways, to bring them into the 21st century. Well, first, you gotta get rid of the criminal governments that are running the third countries. Why are you taking my money and spending it over there? John Kerry says he wants to get carbon dioxide down to 0%. That is a moron. I will call him to his face. Carbon dioxide is exactly what plants breathe, and for that, they give us oxygen that we breathe. If you go down to zero, carbon dioxide, which is impossible as long as the human being is walking on this earth, the plants will die, and then we're gone. Stop looking at something that man has very little effect to. There's real scientists out there been telling them, it's nice to try to take care of your planet, but we're not the biggest contributor to the destruction of it. Earth itself is. It's what she does, and she's not interested in anything on this earth other than herself. Start thinking straight. We cannot have this big Build Back Better plan put in. I hope that Manson and Sinema hold it are true, but I would wish that the Democrats in this place, as well as Connecticut, tell our senators, back off. Redefine print. They're gonna wind up destroying the middle class, and that's exactly what it's geared to do. It's nothing more than a socialist plan. There's no way. Anybody looked at their electric bill lately? Yeah? And it's gonna keep on going, and it's everything going up. And if you go to solar, take a good look at what happened to Texas with the windmills in the wintertime. I was laughing, being a mechanic, I knew what all that brown stuff was coming down out of there. The oil seal blew on them. So everyone that's, that leaked has to be pulled apart, put back together. We're not gonna get any advantage to that. We don't build solar panels in America. We don't build windmills in America, but China does. So $555 billion of our hard-earned money that you're gonna print off machines is going directly over to them. That's the craziest thing I ever heard of. And they're not, they put, they put a coal-generating electric plant online every month, every month, and they're still short electricity, and they have no intentions of getting into the climate change business, nor does Russia, or nor does India. Not one of them has signed it, and not one of them will sign it. So the three greatest polluters in the world, as economies are gonna roar, why a bunch of politicians sit here in America and destroy the greatest economy in the world? Americans do more good on this planet than any other in all countries combined. A lot of yous may not know that. Even though we're taxed to death, especially in this town, American citizens still donate more money to the world than the entire world combined. If you take that advantage away from us, you're not gonna destroy just this country, you're gonna destroy the world, because the world depends on this country staying a massive economic engine that it is. Get out of the stupid thinking and start getting back into the smart thing, right? President of the United States is about to release the oil reserve, emergency oil reserves, probably tomorrow, and he never had to do it if he had kept the Trump-era energy plan, and he could go right back and put it back into effect. Our enemies are watching this. You do, I don't know if any of yous understand what an oil reserve is for in this country. It's not to build up our economy or to keep the oil price down. If we have to go to war against these people, who are we gonna need gasoline? Anybody know how much a tank takes? It's five gallons of gas to a mile. You don't think the enemy's gonna give it to us, do you? So we're gonna need those reserves to refine just to stay alive. It's not made to use, to, to bring down an oil price that's only gonna last for 30 days or 40 days. That's the wrong kind of economic crisis. I'm going broke. This is the fastest I've ever backed up in the 70 years I've been on this earth. My income increased money-wise $275 for the month without changing my lifestyle. My electric's higher, gasoline for the car is higher, food is higher. I can't stop doing what I'm doing. I have a sick wife at home, so I can't sit with my house at 50 degrees like everybody else, right? I'm getting murdered, and it all happened on this president's watch, this stupidity. A bunch of kids that have no idea what they're talking about because they've never made a paycheck, not yet anyways. The ones that do finally realize, boy, am I stupid. Yeah, keep asking for this and asking for that. Give away everything to everybody, and then take a good look at what your paycheck looks like. When they finally do get a real paycheck, they realize at home that 200 here, 200 there, 300 here, and the next thing, they're going home with 600 bucks. It's called taxes. When you give things to people that don't wanna work, it's gotta come somewhere. The government doesn't create, doesn't make money. They print it, but they don't make it. Neither does the state or this city. Everything you spend comes out of my pocket and everybody else that sits there. Sooner or later, it's not gonna be there anymore. And if it goes the way it's going, it's not me or anybody out here that's gonna be taking a pay cut. It's gonna be the fire department, the police department, the teachers, the city workers, and this whole city hall. You're gonna take massive cuts, because I'm not gonna be sitting out in the street, and my wife's not gonna starve so I can feed yous. The business is this, we don't have it, you don't get it. And if you don't get it, then you gotta cut or lay off. Simple as that. This is what happens when you start talking and doing stupid things. And right now, this, my own government is actually working against me, not for me. And if it's not working for me, it's not working for anybody in back of me either, because I know it when I go in the grocery stores. You've got to hear it. I can't buy a steak, because they want 20 bucks for a steak this big. I might as well buy filet mignon's. I can't buy it. I can't afford it. Everything's gone up. I keep doing what I'm doing, and I'm running out of money. I'm on a fixed, my wife and I were on a fixed income. We're retired. You wonder why the old leave? Well, but when we leave, you're not getting people at our caliber or above, you're getting poor people in this country, into this town. Take a good look around you. I got people that brag that they put their houses on Section 8, and the reason they said so, right, is because I'm guaranteed X amount of money. I can't guarantee that the guy I put in there rent-wise is gonna have a job two months from now, but Section 8, I'm guaranteed. That's all hard-earned tax money, putting a roof over somebody else's head that hasn't decided to go out and make a living for themselves. I never took anything from anybody. That's a mooch where I come from. My father raised us to stand on your own two feet and make your own weight. You're not put on this earth to beg off of him or anybody else. My father gave us what we needed to survive. After that, anything else we wanted, we had to get ourselves. And then there was a point where you don't get it anymore. It's time to fly. Time to stand up, be a man, step outside. You fall down, he's come back, brushed us off, picked us up, now try it again till you get it right. Maybe a little hard, all right, but I learned it's the right thing to do. And we got to start weeding out the people that are just hanging on and sucking us dry. I'm a great believer in every year you should have to qualify for welfare, every year. I can't believe that young kids that I see sitting there with food stamps in their hands, sitting in Section 8 housing with arms and legs, running around, sitting on the beach, and they don't have a job. That's crazy. I've worked two full-time jobs most of my life. I wouldn't dream of just sitting around doing nothing. But you people seem to allow it. I don't ever see any regulations. I call up on, on, on a welfare fraud. New for fact. You know what I told by the state? Well, you can give it the name, but we probably won't get to them, because we only have four investigators in the entire state for fraud. But they have 2,800 people passing out welfare. That's crazy, which you're pretty much saying is we're not interested. That's job security for state workers. They just, they sit there and tell you how to get everything. I got people sit there and they say, well, Mike, you can get this. I don't wanna hear it. I'm not looking to get it, because that means somebody else has gotta work harder to give it to me. You gotta stop, and I don't wanna hear state and federal grants anymore. Let's go where the woke's go. From now on, say exactly what it is so the people know and understand. They are taxpayer-funded grants and taxpayer-federal-funded grants. The federal don't have money. They take money from us to give to somebody else. And if you had stayed in your own realm and where you belong, you wouldn't need the grant money. By the time that this city, and I'll tell you, the taxpayers in this city, the next budget comes up, I do this because people, I didn't realize this is out here. The people have to get a hold of the budgets and sit down and do the math. They will be as amazed as I am to how much money goes through this town, but we don't have the capability of fixing anything, because by the time we get through paying the payrolls, the benefits and the health insurance and everything else for everybody that works in this town, there's nothing left to fix the town with. Now we gotta go get grant money to pave the roads, fix the sewers. We gotta go beg it. If you didn't get the, if you didn't get this... If you didn't get the, if you didn't get this taxpayer's money from the state and the federal government, you couldn't even pay the benefits and the payrolls that you have in this city. This is a 10-square-mile stinking little city with a $165 million budget that grows every year. We can't keep up with it anymore. You're over here bragging about a brewery, which I don't care, I haven't had a drink in 22 years, all right? You know, brewery came into town a long time. But I don't hear anything about the haven that's been going on for the last eight years that I know of. All right, I moved in this town 22 years ago. That project was supposed to be up and running and finished, and nothing's moving now. Where are they? You don't hear nothing, you don't read nothing in the paper anymore, the machinery hasn't moved there, and you're worried about a brewery. Aren't you? I wonder what kind of influence that's going to bring. And I'll say, "Well, no, no, it's up class." Well, everything is up class until you get the wrong people coming into town to declass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey, for your comments. Anyone else from the public would like to address the City Council? Mr. Fra, um...
Good evening. My name is Leonora Rodriguez, 399 Third Avenue. Today I have two asks. I am, I am proposing a portion of the ARPA funds to be deployed towards increasing social services for older adults residing here in town, and to expand on senior center programs that promote healthy aging, and the allocation of funds for the development of a new senior center or location to be found. The needs specifically are increase of social services, as I mentioned, housing assistance, medical, financial, mental health support, transportation, an increase and to improve upon food-based and wellness programs for West Haven seniors. And the last need, as I mentioned, is the new senior center building program location for increased ability and accessibility for all. I recommend the addition of four senior center staff for social services and recreational activities, free lunch or reduced lunch for those 65-plus through local restaurant partnerships, and a new ground-level location for a senior center along a bus route here in town. The Connecticut Healthy Data Reports 2021 indicates that of the 65-plus population, near 30% here in West Haven unfortunately have worse conditions than other seniors in other neighboring towns. Our most economically vulnerable group are community-dwelling older adults without family support and those with low and fixed incomes. Many of the older adults reach out to agencies for support, some go without none. Senior centers are often called when community members have exhausted there are options for communal support or are facing life-altering situations such as medical needs, mental health support, housing, and food insecurity, as well as caring for a spouse or a loved Social service needs have also increased during this time period with needs from our older adults ranging from referrals to other agencies to help with social isolation, housing, and safety. The limited staffing and/or agents that are appropriate for social services really compound the issues and delay services to those in need. And this is especially true during emergent situations for seniors in needs, such as what we saw during COVID-19 last year. The addition of staffing to coordinate and to ensure prompt response to older adults' needs will vastly improve senior supportive services here in this town. The addition of funds to guarantee prepared meals provided to seniors in need will assist in improving senior nutrition by removing the barrier of cost that can help those with challenges of preparing meals, those with limited at-home cooking abilities or other barriers. And the allocation of a centrally-located ground-level senior center for West Haven older adults to receive information, nutrition, other social service support will help citizens' needs now and offer opportunities for future age-friendly incentives here. Currently, the third-floor location of the senior center is by a single elevator, I believe, or by stairs, if you'd like. Both options present limitations to older adults with disabilities if the elevator is out of service. Overall, this proposal relates to the COVID-19 community needs and is worthy of ARPA funding due to the increase of above-mentioned services, especially during the shut-down that we saw last year during, where many of our vital programs in the community, including the West Haven LD Service Services Senior Center, was shut down. My second ask is something for a little, I would like to say, a little more fun, which is to establish an arts and culture commission for the city of West Haven. They actually, it actually really pairs really nicely with the senior center and with older adults because we find that social isolation overall by older adults is experienced, their experiences with it can increase depression, loneliness, ultimately a failure of health. What we see in other towns is that we have, such as New Haven, Milford, any other town around that has an arts and culture commission, we see opportunities for citizens to be able to go out and enjoy themselves. We have a unique diversity here in West Haven that I see need to be threaded a little better. I see lots of cultural groups, arts, artists, folks in theater and music and whatnot that can be pulled together to create something a little bit more vibrant for the city. So a vibrant arts and culture commission engages ideals that a striving and surviving city is defined by its ability to connect and to advance its creative community and to offer meaningful opportunities for citizens. It's benefits both in the immediate and the long-term socioeconomic growth by providing citizens entertainment, interest, and sense of community and purpose. In this proposal, the Arts and Culture Commission would be responsible for providing recommendations to the City Council and various city departments on programs and activities related to arts and culture. The commission would oversee implementation of the recommendations, including development of a public arts program and the establishment of a community cultural arts facility. I know we have a building somewhere around us, I can't figure out what direction I'm in right now, but nearby there's a building that's been earmarked for quite a while, and I see, and I like to think that there's a potential for that to eventually move forward, but I know there's other pressing things that the council and everyone has to work on. But it's something that we should not leave to decide. We should make some efforts to really consider it and really consider what it does for our city that is trying to move forward from its past. Finally, through any findings through the Arts and Culture Commission, those recommendations that I mentioned would be forwarded to the City Council for cultivating a sustainable long-term plan that supports community aspirations for a vibrant cultural scene here in West Haven. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up, did, did, did you submit, so we have a link on the city's website to submit recommendations for ARPA funding. Did you happen to submit those proposals?
Yes, both.
Great, okay.
In its entirety, these are...
Terrific. No, I'm glad you read them into the record. Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address the City Council, Mr. Frazzalone and then Ms. Slamba, all right?
Good evening, Paul Frazzalone, 19 Bloom Street. I just want to go back to the, what we started this evening with. I'm all in favor of positive economic development in West Haven. We need something. We need a domino effect to draw people off the highway. If it's the brewery, you know, I heard very good things tonight, and I'm sure they would be great neighbors for us. They'll be an asset to the city. I don't want to see high rises. I don't want to see, you know, right now going to go 37 feet. I would hate to see anything taller than that. But it can be a positive domino effect because where I live on Bee Street, it's stagnant. There's nothing going on. We sold chicks recently, private sale in the debonair. If this project goes through on Rock Street, hopefully it's a domino effect that's going to take a left on Campbell, go down Bee Street, and then eventually get to First Avenue to Elm Street. I mean, that's all we call for, hope for. I mean, David Beckham is doing a great job in Allentown, and it's creating a domino effect off his positive development is creating with, with, with UNH. Who thought Allentown would have an atmosphere down in the center of Allentown? I mean, they created that. It's, you have beautiful shops. That's the same thing that happened next to Jimmy's at the conference center. Let's bring it down to the new owners of the Parkade. Let's bring it down there. Let's take that left on Campbell. Because we all know Campbell Avenue needs, needs something. And then now where I live on Bee Street, you know, once that road's elevated, if somebody get back to me when the project is going to be finished, I know somebody talked about it recently, but when they're going to start the elevation and when's it going to be finished? Because that's, the owners of Chicks and the debonair, they need to know all that stuff. Even though it's not going to the debonair, it's under that Moore Street. But it's definitely some positive things happening in West Haven. It's been a long time since we could say that. Unfortunately, when we get this negative stuff, what happened to City Hall, that took the front burner, and the development on Rock Street itself was in a back burner. Let's, whatever you guys decide tonight, let's work with these people. I know some of our commissions are, some of the people on some of our commissions are prejudgmental on some of their opinions, which they shouldn't be. They should listen to everybody's insight, the developer and the city. So let's move forward with this. If you guys vote on it tonight, that'll be awesome. Let's get something positive going. And also, I know some of these I probably disagree with over the last couple of years since you guys have been sitting here. I want to thank yous for being here, those that are leaving. It takes a lot of hard work to get away from your family, to come here and listen to the citizens of West Haven. I thank you, and majority of the cities, citizens of West Haven, thank you for what you've done for us over the last couple of years. I know the last month wasn't going to be your, the month you expected, but you guys kept your heads above water, and thank you very much. And please stay committed in community service, like Barry said earlier. Community service is a big part of most of us being here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frazzalone, for your comments. Ms. Slamba?
Eleanor Slamba, 18 Fourth Avenue. I love West Haven. I have an update, an announcement, and an invitation. There could be a long version, but I won't give you that tonight. For about two years, I've been involved in a cultural asset mapping project. In the before times, I was accepted into a program called the Neighborhood Leadership Program that's run by the Community Foundation for Greater New Haven. And that program accepts who they deem to have the potential for, to be neighborhood leaders and to take on a project and tie it to your own sense of personal purpose, and they give resources and training to do that. So given my professional background in arts management and my love for West Haven and past projects taken on with your help, such as Citywide Open Studios that was at the alternative space at Yale West Campus in 2018 and 2019, what came out of that project was a desire for the artists to, who live here in West Haven and produce work, to have more contact with each other, more knowledge about each other. So I took on as my project to do a cultural map of West Haven, to kind of put dots on a geographic map to see what kinds of cultural assets we have here and what the gem of our city, what the diversity looks like when you kind of color-code it for different types of assets and, and just see what we have here. Now, cultural asset mapping is something undertaken all over the world. There is a specific tool that has been used by Chicago and Austin. I got it from my colleague on the Arts and Culture Department in Hamden, who used it successfully. It's called the Cultural Assets Mapping Project Kit, or Camp Kit. So using that tool, I'm about to announce, announcing this week Phase 1 of 170 cultural assets here in West Haven, and it's really beautiful when you look on a map because we don't just have like a cultural district or everything centered in the downtown. It's really like colors all over the map of the city. And that is, can only get richer and more detailed with further participation. There's a form, my son's at Cornell in urban planning, and actually helped me with a, with an input form to do the data collection. And I'll send, I sent a release to the City IT person and the West Haven Voice this week. I'll send it to the mayor's office and to each of you tomorrow, listing the 170 that we have so far. And then with an input form, there's a type of a meeting, like a cultural facilitation meeting, if anybody wants to have one in their district. We could have one, or it could just, you know, be, continue to go out on social media to add to the map so that hopefully this 170 is really just the beginning. And then we'll have a snapshot. Since it's the 100th anniversary year, it's very appropriate, almost, that we do is the snapshot of what arts and culture looks like in West Haven in 2021, and then it can be used for future cultural planning purposes, to fuel partnerships and collaborations in the arts, and also as a really powerful tool for tourism and marketing of our city. So again, that's the update, the announcement, this week Phase 1 release, and the invitation to continue to build on this project with me so we have an even better map. Thank you.
Thank you. Good day, news. Thank you for your leadership, Eleanor, on that. Is there anyone else from the public that, uh, march?
Margaret A. Krizinski, 1 Roward Street in the Allentown section of West Haven. I'm not going to take too long. I don't know what, why Mr. Hickey gets so upset about Allentown and our fire department and $500,000. We paid it back, okay? When the fire department had a problem with getting people to vote on our budget, we came to West Haven to get a little help, which we did. You know, if we had to get some help, we paid it back. I don't know what his problem is. We take care of ourselves. The problem with me is Allentown wants to build a new firehouse. I've been to a meeting, they finally, they finally added, had a public meeting last, beginning of November, and I got to go to that firehouse on Admiral Street. I was a little irritated when I saw a badge, a fire department badge. No mention of Allentown was on that badge. Why? West Haven is taking us over? No, no, no. We're Allentown. Allentown. We're not West Haven. We're in West, the city of West Haven. But the firehouse is going to be in Allentown. That's where that fire department was founded. I want Allentown on that badge. It's designated for Allentown. We, the people of Allentown, not West Haven, are going to be paying for that fire department. It goes back to when it was founded, and it was a volunteer fire department. Now it's a paid fire department, and we, the people of Allentown, are paying it with our taxes. So it should be designated as Allentown, not West Haven. We are situated in West Haven, but we are Allentown, and I would like to see that badge redone showing Allentown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Krizinski, for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the City Council for a second time? Anyone from the public like, Commissioner?
Frederick Brown, 100 Smith Street, West Haven. I'd just like to take a minute and thank all of you for your work for the past two years. I think this is one of the best councils we ever had. And a lot of progress was made this year. It was a difficult last couple of weeks, but that's not to fall that any of you, as far as I'm concerned. I think you did a wonderful job. Thank you. And I would just like to say a special thanks to the four of you who will be leaving tonight, your final council meeting. your final council meeting. I got to know...I got to meet another friend...Bill Collin, a friend for many years, and Liz Johnson became a friend and Crystal, I...thank you. Barry, thank you very much. Great job, everybody. Thank you. And good luck to the new council. Best wishes to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, for your comments. Anyone else from the public like to address the City Council? For a second time, anyone from the public like to address the City Council? For a third time, anyone from the public like to address the City Council? Seeing none, our comment is now closed. We will enter into our regular meeting. The first order of business is the approval of the November 8, 2021 minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bruno, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman McGee. Is there any discussion? Councilman Cohen.
Yes, under new business, it did not include my comment, but I'd like to once again put in record, was not listed. During the November 8 meeting, I stated my grave concern as to why the hotel project was not...proposal was not discussed to the council. We only discovered it that evening. I would like that put into the record. I said it on November 8 and it's not listed there at all. And I'll say it again. My grave concern as to why the hotel proposal was not disclosed to the council. We only discovered it that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Councilwoman Cohen's amendment. We will check the tape and the city clerk will add that as amended. It's in fact, it is in the tape under new business, so we'll add that. Can I have a motion to approve as amended? I don't need to do that. At least I do. Motion by Councilman Bruno, is there a second? Second, Councilwoman O'Connor. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the amendment passes. Approval of the minutes as amended now for the November 8 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Approval of the minutes of the November 15, 2021 special meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bruno, is there a second? Councilwoman McGee, Councilman Cohen, is there any discussion on those minutes? Councilwoman O'Connor and then Councilwoman Husky.
I didn't...I don't know if I sort of not on the second set you sent us, but on the first page, it says Pat Terry, 215 West Walk. That should be Pat Bolaterry.
Yeah, those aren't the minutes.
Okay, never mind.
I didn't check them, if the new minutes have my name spelled right.
The November 15 special meeting.
There's not. My name is wrong for that. We could just update my spelling.
Any other discussion on the minutes from November 15? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Councilwoman Finelli abstains. Motion carries. Next up is the minutes of the special meeting of November 17, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bruno, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cohen. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Come on, we could do this. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Gallego abstain. Motion carries by majority. Thank you. Okay, tonight's communications are read into the record. A communication from Corporation Counsel regarding the new lease for Coast Guard's use of New Haven Harbor Outer Channel Rear Range Light. That is with the Health, Welfare and Safety Committee, Councilman Bruno. Communication from the tax collector regarding overpayment of refunds for the month of November 2021 will be read into the record at the appropriate time. And Communication C is a communication from the Public Works regarding a five-year proposal for affordable waste. Who has a current three-year contract would be the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Husky. We will recess to committee meetings. The first committee is the Health, Welfare and Safety Committee, Councilman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Time is now 8:30. Committee on Health, Welfare and Safety is in session. Members present, Councilman Donovan, Councilwoman McGee, Councilwoman Finelli, Councilman Cohen. Myself acting as chair. We have before us tonight Communication A. Corporation Counsel regarding a new lease for Coast Guard's use of New Haven Harbor Outer Channel Rear Range Light. I would like to bring this out favorably. Can I get a motion? Councilman Donovan, Councilman Cohen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman McGee. Thank you. Time is now 8:31.
Do you need a discussion and then call the vote?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right.
Would anybody like to have any discussion on that?
One, this is an annual renewal, correct?
That's correct.
Making sure.
That's correct. It's just basically for the Coast Guard for the light on Yenna Beach.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I bring that out favorably, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Any extension? Motion carries. Time is now 8:31.
Thank you, Councilman Bruno. Next committee is the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Husky.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 8:32 and your finance committee... Your finance committee is in session with Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Bruno, Masaro and Cohen and myself acting as chair. Communication C from Public Works regarding the five-year proposal for affordable waste. We will be holding this in committee until we have further dialogue with Public Works Commissioner Thomas McCarthy. He is aware. And I understand that Frank is not here, but Mayor Rossi, I do believe that we are still waiting in regards to the police pension study. There is no update, correct?
Correct, there is no update from Milliman.
There is. In regards to ARPA, I know...do you want to give an update on that? Have you decided on when you might be doing your public hearings or...
I didn't have a chance today. I was busy, very busy this morning.
No, that's fine.
And no, but I will. And I am going to actually have like more of a town hall meeting type of thing.
Okay.
The council will have a public hearing when it's their turn, if you will. So I'll be doing a town hall meeting type of thing to have people come and tell me what they want. We've gotten a few more questionnaires. Couple want to fund Allentown Fire Department, I know, because Kristen had showed them to me today.
Okay. I did want to make a motion that we put out an RFP for a plan manager for the ARPA money and if the draft date of when that might...I'm sorry?
Can I just ask a question?
No, I asked you because I thought you were talking to...
Yeah, no, no, no.
I thought it appears...
We'll do that discussion there, okay?
Oh, okay, because well, normally the executive branch asks for the RFPs to go up. I do think the legislative branch did. That's what my question is before we get far into it.
Lee, could you come here, please?
Good evening.
Hi, thank you for appearing. So I want to make a motion because I know when we had our meeting on Friday with CCM, we invited them to come and speak with us. And I think even prior, we've talked about possibly having a body overseeing the ARPA funds. So it was my thought to create...have a motion, to have a RFP created to do that, to create a plan manager and have a draft created and then brought before us. Because it's my thought, and I believe I shared that publicly, that we needed to be very much involved in how things are proceeding going forward and to take action on things that I considered important and that there was no lag time. So the mayor appears to be concerned at the thought that that all comes from the executive branch and not the legislative. What is your legal opinion as to whether or not I have the authority to request an RFP?
I mean, the council, you could put out an RFP. The question is, depending what the RFP, you know, said.
Well, it wasn't going to say anything. See, my request was to have an RFP created and a draft brought for us to get our approval on it before it went out.
To get the council approval on what the RFP looked like?
Yes.
Okay. So generally, so what you're talking about is individuals who would be paid... individual or individuals who would be paid to do proper oversight for that funding?
Correct.
Is that the way you described it?
Correct.
So generally, what happens is it would be...it would be the mayor's role to select those people. You can, however, decide what they're paid. And so historically, that's why both branches would have to work together. Because if...I'll give you an example with the fire department, for instance. The Allentown Fire Board can hire a fire chief, but the mayor has to sign the contract. And if you don't try to have some sort of agreement, you'd never have a fire chief. So this is an area where the two groups...the mayor could... can't hire somebody unless there's a funding source that's approved by the city council to do so. So she can't do it. And then you guys can't actually do the hiring, but you guys can decide how it's funded, how they're paid, what the salary is, things like that. So you both have a role, but it's not unilateral.
Well, I'm not even supposing to be...I don't even function that way. I don't function that way. So I understand what you're saying, historically what we can't do, right? Because historically, things that we've wanted to do have gotten...put the brakes on, right? Historically, some of the...for example, the IT study. Now, I listened to the MARV meeting and I was completely annoyed at the fact that we led the MARV to believe that we wanted to outsource the IT department, which is completely...what's a really good word for that? Absurd, yes. It was completely absurd because that was not our ask. But we've allowed that to go out there in the universe and be said over and over and over again. So the entire year happened. And my ask as the finance chair back then and the approval of this city council was to have an IT study done so that we could possibly bring together all the big parts of the city, the fire department, the police department, the board of ed, the city, the Allentown, West Shore, all be under one IT. Never ever once said we wanted anyone to lose their job. We just wanted to see if we could do it all together as a collaboration to get a better price. That got stonewalled for a year and that $25,000 ended up in the general fund. So here I am, and I know historically I can't do it, but I'm literally asking for a legal opinion as to whether or not we can do it. Because we know even if we say that we want to do it, it could just sit there on somebody's desk and never get done.
So there, you're entitled to do that. And the way that usually works is your chair sends me a letter based on your request and says, hey, we want a legal opinion and here's what we want a legal opinion. And pursuant to your charter, I'm supposed to provide you with a legal opinion. So you can get...
Oh, so I can't ask you for your legal opinion right here, right now? Because I thought that's what I was doing. I asked if your legal opinion is if we can request for an RFP draft.
Yeah, it's better if someone, even if, given the circumstances, even if my secretary sends me a letter from your chair, you have a record of it that you requested me. It's always good. And then because it's an opinion, I actually have a book of opinions that I try to keep track of. So it's kind of a...it's a better way to do it. I will make a note, but I generally defer to your chair to make... I would defer to your chair to make sure the chair agrees that that's something. If any of you note when I communicate with you, I always, you know, I send something to Council Donovan, but I also send Ron Quagliani. I don't think anybody ever gets something from me unless, you know, he CC'd on council business. Because I should deal with your chair. I shouldn't be dealing with 13 individual councils.
So if I could, point of order, help, maybe you just raise the...make a motion that you ask for a legal opinion of the Corp Counsel regarding the council authorizing an RFP and then it'll be on the record.
Yeah, we...in this instance where we have someone doing minutes, if you just put it in the minutes, I'm good. You know, as long as we have some written record is what we're requesting.
Okay.
I can just have the minutes read back.
So yes, I'd like to make a motion that we get a legal opinion on the council's ability to submit an RFP.
You're in Finance Committee. You're the chair and so it would just be the Finance Committee taking the vote.
Can I get a second? Or first, I think. I didn't get a...thank you, Councilwoman.
You made the motion, so she doesn't have a second.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion? I'm so relieved. Discussion, did you have a discussion?
I have a question. So I just want to make sure I understand. So what is happening now is your ask is not going to be provided right now. We're putting it in writing and then we'll get legal opinion from the attorney about the question you just asked.
Right, if we can request an RFP.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I thought we have in the past, but I could be wrong. Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, I'm just...I'm a little confused. I think I understand your motion, but if Lee is just willing from our meeting minutes to...
Yeah, I'll consider this a request today.
Yeah, so I'm...is this just for future reference that you're making the proposal? Or just, you know, I'm just...I'm just trying to figure out. We're going to get...we're going to get what we need, I guess, is what I'm asking here. So maybe I'm lost here.
My point of order is that if we send a letter, there's... it may not spell it out specifically in the minutes, right? As opposed to a motion would be...would be a binding record, if you will.
And I would go by the letter if he sends out a letter.
Okay, then, okay, that was...
You're good.
I agree.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Anything else regarding ARPA? Nope. MARV meeting update, I don't know if anyone...everyone watch it? The discussion regarding compensatory time for elected and appointed officials? I'm assuming... So how... We...I get...I have questions because I'm wanting to know... and Lee or the mayor, I guess one of you can ask because I'm assuming the personnel director's not here as we requested. How does the union...how do union people who earn comp time track it? Is that through ARP? ARP? ADP, thank you.
As far as I know, it is not. As far as this, though, just so that we are clear, elected should really be removed because elected, elected, which there's only two of us that are full-time, myself and the clerk, do not get comp time. I think that was pretty much established in my first term, so they used to years ago, but they changed it. They changed the resolution. As far as how that they track, I, attorney Ternan could better give an answer because he is one of the individuals that is entitled and follows the union contract, even though he's an appointed official, so he knows the, you know, what he has to do.
So, I'm so glad you mentioned that. So, I don't know when it was, was it two weeks ago, the last time we had a meeting? I'm positive that I said that I appreciate you very much, Mr. Ternan, but that the community was very concerned, and I got a lot of questions, and my, we've talked about this so many times over the years that it's mind-boggling, but that I believed in my professional opinion that somebody who benefits from this benefit, you kind of like, there's, there's a bias, not, there's not a bias, there's a, I'm sorry?
Conflict.
Oh, there's a conflict. And I just wanted to be sure that when we had this discussion, that the residents could be sure that there was no conflict, there was no nothing, so, which is why I made a request, and I noticed that my request was either ignored, or maybe other information went out, and somehow somebody told me that nobody was going to come, and that my request wasn't ignored, it was actually just postponed, and I could expect it in two weeks. So, now, I am respectfully requesting, once again, to have somebody who does not benefit from getting comp time, and elected officials will stay on there until such time that we remove it, because the residents of West Haven are still talking about it. They still have concerns about it. They want to know what our policy is, how people are tracking their time. And before I become really annoyed, I am just asking for some professional courtesy to get my questions answered, in a way to which the community and the residents that elected me are satisfied. I want to know how union personnel are tracking their comp time, and if they're not doing it ADP, I want to know when they're going to start doing it in ADP, for no other reason but the taxpayers deserve them to do it in a way that can be tracked, as the appointed positions as well. And it is not to say anything about anybody and how they're doing it, if it's not done right, but it, we are in the 21st century, we have ADP, it should all be done that way. I do it in my timesheet. I don't get paid for it, I don't get comp time, but when I work more than 40 hours, I'm supposed to track it for workers' comp and for other benefits. So, I want to know when I should expect the information, and I think I'm asking nicely. I, I don't even, I don't even know why I have to ask twice.
Okay, so, assuming that we don't get any unexpected litigation that needs to be attended to immediately, what the plan is, is yes, you will have an independent third party involved, but information has to be gathered so that independent third party can work well. So, I just need to put that together. I want to give it to the personnel director so that she can have input. The mayor would like to have input as well, but I promise you, you will have an independent third party.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
And if I could just have two more weeks, I'm sorry, I just did not get to that piece of it. And if I just send it out to somebody to do, they're going to come back and ask me to do my part anyway. So, I would rather have that done before I do that. And I'm sorry, I usually don't ask for, to take an incomplete on any assignment here, but this one, I just ran out of time, I couldn't get to it, but I will do, make every effort to get to it next week, and we will have somebody independently assigned, and it will go forward from there.
So, we can, spoke to the chairman, I mean, maybe we could do a special meeting, because we would pay the person to come in and just to make sure that when they're on the clock and we're paying them, it's more efficient and done in a timely manner. And I can, and I appreciate that you are very busy, and you have a lot of things going on, but it is very important to me that I no longer accept things without knowing why, you know, because my acceptance of expecting the best out of people, or assumptions about people, have not really gone well the last eight months. So, I am going to do better and expect things that, that when I ask, that they're delivered upon, and it's not just you, Lee. It, this is not directed just to you. My expectation is that I'm given the respect and the courtesy that I deserve, and I appreciate you. Anybody else got anything to say that they'd like to make a comment on, in the chair? Okay, so, um-
Would you open, are you going to open it up to the whole council, or?
Oh, yes, I was open to everybody on the council. Does anyone, chairman, did you want to say something?
No one's going to be a taker, I'll be a taker.
You could be a taker.
So, Lee, here's, and I appreciate Chairwoman Hosky's frustration, right? So, here's, after our last meeting, to Councilman Cohen's point, we wrote a letter to the personnel director and asked, we are requesting a list of all open, this was dated November 10th. We are requesting a listing of all open positions, positions where employees are on leave over two weeks and anticipated near-term retirements. We'd like the list sent to myself, this is the clerk, and the chairman of the council by Monday, November 15th. Still waiting. No reply.
She didn't reply at all?
No. She, correction for the record, she replied in email that she was gathering the information, but I haven't gotten the information.
I, I, I'm sorry, I thought she replied to that. I will check on that.
Can I?
I was understood she replied to that. I will check on that.
And there were some things, I think, she said, chairman, that, based on law and-
Which is, which is fine.
Which is fine.
Which is fine. Listen, at the end of the day, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I just want to help, right? Because we heard, listen, we all sat and, and here I go, and I'm going to try not to make it a, a long dissertation here, but the level of freshen, frustration that I have, and I know some of these council people have, is because we sit and we listen to the MARB.
Mm-hmm.
And again, this is four years now I've been requesting, right? I don't want to go back to the two-legged stool versus a three-legged stool scenario, but we are boxed out of the process. We have to get information about what the MARB wants from the city council through the executive branch, right? And then, we don't really have any direct dealings or conversation with the MARB. So, here we are, the legislative body that's setting the budget, which the MARB has to approve, and, and have them going through potentially new hires, right, that the MARB has to approve, don't have any type of collaboration between these, these two bodies, which makes completely zero sense to me. And I've asked, and I've asked, and I've asked if we could collaborate together, because at the end of the day, we need the executive branch, we need the MARB, and we need the legislative branch, but if, if one piece in that's missing, we're going to get what we're getting. So, we're just trying to, to be part of the process, because we know we can be helpful. So, the letter, and again, no disrespect, I don't know who the personnel director is, and she, he or she could be very busy, but the idea was, because we listened to the MARB meeting and go on and on and on about positions, positions, and positions, and then Frank came in front of us last meeting and said, you know, I really need some more positions, I have to restructure the finance department, and I did remind him that he came to us at budget time to ask for positions to refinance the, restructure the finance department, which we did approve. So, we're doing another restructuring of the finance department. But we wanted to get, I wanted to get an idea of what the open positions are. Where are the gaps, right? Because when we have gaps, that means there are gaps in checks and balances, and we have more problems that occur. So, so typically, I don't, you know, we want to be part of the process, and I'm saying this to you because you're the core guy that's standing at the podium, right? But I'm saying it to everybody that government does not work unless we're all unified and working together. And I think I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't think the personnel director did that on purpose. I will-
No, I'm not saying she did.
I thought she responded to be perfectly fair, so I'll check.
And I'm going to just echo what the chairman said, and I don't want to drag it on either, but I don't believe she did it on purpose, but I know at the, at the MARB meeting, it was said as if the city council is holding up the hiring practice, and some examples were given. Had I had the ability, I would have corrected the record then and there. We not held it up. You, you want to talk about us debating at, at budget time over different hirings and nitpicking, and whether it be myself or Councilman Cohen talking about the thing, the different positions? That is our job. But Frank failed to say that I actually said two weeks ago, tell me the positions you need, and we're, and we want, we want to get the money. I stood here, looked him dead in his face, and in all that time, we've heard nothing from Frank. It's been two weeks. Maybe he has positions, or maybe we were just thrown under the bus because we're not in front of the MARB, and we can't really explain our side of things. So, it's really just frustrating to sit there and think, you're pointing the finger at the city council to explain the, the lack of action on the part of the people who are standing in front of them. And I listened to that whole meeting, and I was just floored. But I'll just let it go, and hopefully from here, we could be level set, because I'd like to collaborate, I really would, or I'm going to have to figure out another way to get it done, because I'm not going to be ignored, or, or, yep, that's exactly it, I won't be ignored. Does anyone else from the city council have anything to say? Otherwise, we could just move on. Okay, so, I don't think of any motions up. Their finance committee is closed at 8:58.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. We will now enter into executive session to discuss the financial updates on the mixed-use hydroponic development, and number two, to discuss a legal review for the Savin Rock Conference Center property. Invited into executive session will be Corp. Counsel Ternan, his assistant, and Mayor Rossi. So, we are in executive session. Okay, we are back in open session at 10:18. Okay, so, we'll continue where we left off. We'll go to the public lands committee, Councilman Donovan.
The time is 10:18. The committee on public lands is in session. Member present, Councilman Gallagnano.
Wait a minute, I made a mistake.
Okay, let me back up.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake. Yes, I did. I jumped ahead.
You did?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, unfinished business, there is none. So, committee reports, we're back to a council as a whole for committee reports. We have communication-
You were right, man.
Communication B from the tax collector regarding overpayment of refunds for the month, month of November 2021, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. And then, we'll get report out from the committees. The first committee to report out is the Health, Welfare, and Safety Committee, Councilman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, the Committee on Health, Welfare, Safety, to whom it was referred, the matter of an approval of Coast Guard's new lease for use of New Haven's outer channel rear range light. Reports that the committee met on the 22nd day of November 2021 to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, the city council approves the new lease for the Coast Guard's use of New Haven Harbor outer channel rear light.
Councilman Bruno has brought forward Communication A from the Corporation Council regarding the new lease for the Coast Guard's use of New Haven Harbor outer channel rear range light. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Cohen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up is the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Hosky.
The time is now 10:21. Any committee? I don't even know what I'm doing. Hold on, we're holding Communication-
C.
C. And I'm all set.
Communication key, C, from Public Works regarding the five-year proposal for affordable waste, has been held by the Finance Committee this evening.
And that be all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Now, we'll go to the Public Lands Committee, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, chairman. The time is now 10:20. I'm just reading the resolution, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, I define, be it resolved by the city council of the City of West Haven that Nancy R. Rossi, mayor for the City of West Haven, has the right to negotiate a contract with the Day Brothers LLC, a Massachusetts limited liability company, consistent with the detailed attached memo, which we incorporate by reference as if were part of the resolution itself. Final contract will be brought back to the city council for review, for the memorandum. In executive session on 11/8/2021, the city council discussed the details of a letter of intent from Day Brothers LLC to develop 561 Main Street and 10 Sawmill Road for a mixed-use hydroponic development. The mixed-use development is comprised of a three-story, 200,000-square-foot vertical farm, approximately 30 to 60 rental residential apartment units, and approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial space, merchandise to complement the downtown business district with a specific focus on healthy food offerings. We will be discussing updates to the letter of intent based on requests from the city council, as well as addressing questions from the council from the previous executive sessions. Key points include, part one, a counteroffer on purchase price from the original $175,000 to a tiered purchase price ranging from $175,000 to $300,000 based on the amount of remediation funding the buyer will receive. Part two, clarifications on the rental residential component of the development, including the following. Units will only be available to public if not rented by workforce. There will be a mix of one- and two-bedroom units with an average size ranging from 900 to 1,000 square feet. Update in estimated number of units from 50 to 75 to 30 to 60, with possibility of below 30 units based on financing. And last, the buyer intends to limit parking to surface-level space available on site.
Councilman Donovan has brought back, has brought forward the resolution that was to be added to the agenda regarding the mixed-use hydroponic, panics development that was read into the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Hosky, Councilwoman O'Connor, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion passes unanimously.
Also have before us, the public hearing on the Savin Rock Conference Center property proposal, resolved. Be it resolved by the city council of the City of West Haven that Nancy R. Rossi, mayor of the City of West Haven, has the approval of the city council, subject to review by Corporation Council, to negotiate a ground lease for payments of no less than $75,000 annually with the Eclipse Development Group located in Woodbridge, Connecticut, to consider the New England Brewing Company as a future occupant of the Savin Rock Conference Center site. Proposal is 50,000 square feet, an outdoor patio, 75 jobs, and two stories. Final contract will be brought back to the city council for review.
Councilman Donovan has brought forward a resolution to allow the mayor to begin negotiations with the Eclipse Development Group. That was read into the record. Is there a second? That was read into the record, is there a second? Second, by Councilwoman Finelli, Councilman Conlin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion passes unanimously. You all set, Councilman Donovan?
I am sorry, yes, I am.
Thank you very much, Councilman Donovan. Action of ordinance is previously presented, there are none. Any council liaison reports we want to throw in there to round out the evening? No? Okay, any new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, let's, let's start over here, so, Councilman Masaro.
I'm on board, weren't you supposed to make a judgment, adjustment on the agenda for...
I made the adjustment in the motion for the hydroponics? Yes. Thank you. Councilman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to send a letter of congratulations to the West Haven Seahawks for successfully hosting the 1-1 Regional Championship. Special thanks to Michael Last and his leadership, it was great to see the patrons to our local hotels and restaurants. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno, I concur. Councilman Cohen.
Yeah, I just want to, just thank everyone, last Saturday, we had a food, we had a week food drive and a number of people that stopped by at Offshore Restaurant along Yale West and thanked the two sponsors. In three hours, we collected $2,500 and 2,500 pounds of food. So, I gotta, I just bless everybody who took the time to stop, just a wonderful thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Councilman Donovan?
Just, just a comment, being my first term for the four that are leaving the City Council, it has been my honor and my pleasure to work with each and every one of you. Going to miss you as all before you, and I'm sure the new people coming in will do a good job as well, so I just want to thank you for allowing me to work with you for the past two years.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan, is there any other new business? Councilwoman McGee.
I just want to, just, an amazing farewell to those who are leaving us today, and I have to shout out Liz and Crystal. There are more women on this council than I think has ever happened before, that's history. We make jokes about Crystal being like, one of the most like, just solidly focused individuals like I've ever seen. And Liz, we all have this resolution, Liz was very integral, an integral key...